We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2023-21 for November 7, 2023. Those who like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pleas for reasons, please do.
Amen. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time, before we start the meeting, I'd like to have, if we could, a moment of silence to the passing of Louis Riley. Louis Riley was a great person for Wycomico County, served in a very distinguished position on this actual county council for many years. He also served in the House of Delegates, was also a state senator, and had two separate periods in which he served as Secretary of Agriculture for the state of Maryland under two separate governors. If we could, please, have a moment of silence. Thank you. It's time to entertain a moment, entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. Second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Post. Motion's carried, consent agenda passes unanimously. We have a proclamation to recognize the month of November as National Runaway Month. Is there someone here from the Phoenix Organization? Josh Hastings is going to read it. Josh, I guess you could read it. Sure.
Go read it.
Yeah, say so.
Good evening, everybody. So this is proclamation is National Runaway Prevention Month, whereas November is National Runaway Prevention Month, which began in 2002 and is presented each year by the National Runaway Safeline, a federally designated national communication system for runaway and homeless youth. And whereas runaway youth are often expelled from their home, having experienced trauma, the struggle to meet basic needs, and an increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking. And whereas Phoenix Youth Project Incorporated is working to raise awareness, support, resources for young folks in the community to provide a safe place and grounded in social justice for young people to learn, educate, and transform their lives. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim November as National Runaway Prevention Month in Wycomico County, and encourage all citizens to appreciate the role they can play in advocating for and providing safe alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people, done this day, the 7th day of November 2023. And we'll make sure this gets to your favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Mr. Benson, good evening.
Good evening. Your Honor, your honor. I thought I was going for a minute. Mr. President, we're here for Legislative Bill 2023-15. It's for a public hearing. At the last meeting, it was adopted on first reading. This is an emergency act establishing a war tournament on the processing review and approval of applications, site plans, permits, and other authorizations for the location, construction, and operation of businesses engaged in growing, processing, or selling cannabis, to include onsite consumption establishments for a period of six months, to allow the county sufficient time to enact reasonable, thoughtful, and lawful zoning requirements and other regulations pertaining thereto, as deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Mr. Andrew Illuminati is here if the council wishes to hear from him. I would point out that if this is, this is being presented as an emergency act, in order for this to be adopted as an emergency act under Section 311G of the Charter, five members of the council have to vote in the affirmative.
Superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Benson. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2023-15. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2023-15. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2023-15. Second. Motion's second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Legislative Bill 2023-15, say aye. Post. Motion's carried, Legislative Bill 2023-15 passes unanimously.
If we can do that just by roll call.
You want a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Hawley?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Josh?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Shannon?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Yep, and chair votes aye. Unanimous. Thanks. Ms. Benson?
The second item on the agenda is a public hearing for Legislative Bill Number 2023-16, an act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled "Zoning," Part III, titled "Basic Definitions and Interpretations," Article 6, titled "Terms Defined," Section 225-25, titled "Definition of Basic Terms," and Part 6, titled "Accessory and Principal Uses," Article 18, titled "Principal Uses," Section 225-67, titled "Table of Permitted Uses and Designations," and Part 8, titled "Special Exceptions for Particular Uses," Article 20, titled "Uses and Standards for Particular Uses," to establish 225-82.1, titled cannabis business, to regulate the cannabis business, to include the growing, processing, dispensing, and onsite consumption establishments in Wycomico County. And again, Mr. Illuminati is here, should the council have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Legislative Bill 2023-16. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Includes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2023-16, entertained a motion from council to approve it. Second. Any discussion? Mr. Illuminati, did you have anything you wanted to add?
This presentation, first, good evening.
Good evening.
This PowerPoint was prepared based on questions that were received from council at the last meeting. It also just briefly reviews the legislation.
Why don't we do that for the public?
Okay.
It's a good idea. Josh, you had a question?
I just wanted to see if we could do that.
There's your question. Thank you.
So, these are the definitions, these are the state definitions with the word cannabis in front, so that when it's placed within Section 225 of the code, it will be in alphabetical order. Recreation center, that is not a state definition. That term was not defined in the state legislation. What the Planning Commission recommends is to take the county's definition for recreation and the county's definition for active recreation, and make those two equal, both qualify as recreation centers. Here is the table of permitted uses. We see that growing and processing are permitted in the I-1 and I-2, and dispensing by special exception in the I-1 and the I-2. That will be how the table is amended below. It's not in capital letters, so this already appears, but just to make both council and the public clear, that all uses that are not listed in the table of permitted uses are prohibited. So here, we don't see anything, the C-1, C-2, C-3, LB-1, LB-2, and for that reason, there is nothing included regarding any of the residential, because there are no recommendations to allow this activity in that zone.
And for the public's knowledge, it's I-1 and I-2, light industrial and industrial zones. Okay.
This is then the special standards for cannabis uses. This will all be new and added to 225, Section 82.1, cannabis businesses. The reason why some are emboldened and underlined in here is to show what's separate from the state legislation. So this, these are the state setbacks of 500 feet and 1,000 feet between cannabis businesses. We are then, the Planning Commission is recommending, as is staff, that there be no onsite consumption established establishments in Wycomico County, and to, just to double check, again, a cannabis business not enumerated as a permitted use is prohibited within Wycomico County. So even if somebody made an argument, I believe it would be unsuccessful, because it's not enumerated in the table of permitted uses. This Section C double clarifies that. Last time, the question was, how did we get to that final map? These are the steps on how the planning department put together the mapping. First, we see what is in gray are all the municipal locations. Then, public and private schools are those little, are the parcels, and they are shaded based on whether they are private or public. Then, after that came all the various daycare and childcare centers. You'll see those in orange. Again, this is all still state regulation, and we have the recreation centers, based on the county definition of recreation center. Layered on top of that are the various public libraries, and those parcels are rather small. Layered on top of that are a bunch of playgrounds. Then, a large portion are public parks. The orange are the Salisbury Parks, and the county and state parks are in green. Take the state regulations, put the 500-foot buffer. What is in black is with the buffer. What is in red is the I-1 and I-2, and what is in light gray are the municipalities. Then there was the, so this then tells us that based just on the state, there are 2,119 acres, over 307 parcels where is eligible for cannabis businesses. Then, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, the request of council, was to see places of assembly. That is already a term defined within the Wycomico County Code. So in light green here, we see the 317 places that qualify as places of assembly. Now, this includes religious assembly, but again, within the code, we have some overlap of what we've already seen. Daycare homes and centers is within the code as a place of assembly, schools, elderly daycare facilities, shopping centers. So this is a little bit more expansive, but even with adding a 500-foot buffer for places of assembly, we see that up here, it says industrial available, 2,093 acres. That is only a loss of 26.58 acres from what the state was allowing. So this is what a final eligibility, 2,093 acres, based on the state law with the addition of places of assembly under county law. Now, if everyone is satisfied with that, that can, that is what was presented last time, but was showing the evolution of the maps. Are there any questions at that point as to how this number was received?
And just clarity, so the 2,093 acres, that doesn't, that's not available land? That is, I mean, that includes a whole lot of industrial space that's already taken up, correct?
It is, there are 2,093 acres of zoned industrial available, whether or not...
Zoned industrial or zoned industrial of like...
Zoned industrial.
So we don't, we don't have an idea of, like, say Pepsi plants on there that would be included in 2,093 acres?
Correct.
So like, if you took the developed or the currently occupied pied of the 2,093 acres, what does that leave us with?
I do not know, because it could be currently active, there could be transition in the future. Cannabis business is $100 million business, they may buy someone out and buy a large parcel. Somebody may want to subdivide a parcel to allow for cannabis business. This is saying that there's 2,093 acres of zoned industrial I-1 or I-2 available.
And for clarity, we're talking about you, the way that you all have gone about this process, or the way the process has arisen at this point, I guess, risen. It is all three of the growers, the processors, and the retail facilities, correct?
Correct, that is the recommendation.
Why do we not pull those out? I'm assuming if you were a farmer, and you might want to be a grower, you would be excluded, right? If you were in the A-1 district right now. If you were a farmer, you would have to go buy an industrial facility in order to do that, correct?
So, the hemp, which has a specific definition, is not part of this. There's a completely separate set of regulations under state law that govern growing hemp, which has a THC level.
Sure, but the state of Maryland doesn't put restrictions on where the, where if you wanted to grow marijuana, separate from hemp, understanding the difference in THC. If you want to, if a farmer wanted to do that according to state regulations, could a farmer do that right now, before our regulate, before we put this in place?
No, they could not. If someone wanted to plant what is essentially high-end, high-THC cannabis in an uncontrolled environment...
In a, in a controlled environment, like most many farms have?
It needs to go to I-1, I-2. To be cannabis...
State law says it has to be in an industrial zone.
No, that is not what state law says. State law's requirement is about buffers. The recommendation of the Planning Commission was that I-1 and I-2, at this point in time, based on the knowing that we're going to receive two dispensaries and eligible for up to 26 micro or standard growing processing licenses, is I-1 or I-2, based on the current data, and based on the various testimony that was received at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I guess what I'm just getting at is, you know, obviously, if folks want to go put up a chicken house, that's going to be half a million dollar operation, at least investment. You know, they have to have facilities, it has its own alarm systems, you name it, security. A farm could do that now, theoretically, if a, if a farmer wanted to go down this route, and they wanted to do that in Wycomico County with state law, they would, they would be allowed to do so. We are taking that extra step, prevent them from doing that, correct?
Well, the state law could also say you can do it in a residential district. There are no zoning requirements in state law. Every county has, calls different zones, different things, has a bunch of different enumerated zones. What the state is providing is buffers, and then what the Planning Commission has done is relied on the expertise of staff, based on testimony of the Cannabis Administration, Sheriff Lewis, and formulated the recommendation to council of I-1 and I-2 for growing, processing, and dispensing at this time.
Yeah, and so the dispensing piece of that, I guess that's the, and I can pause, I don't want to jump in if you're going to get into further into those details, but I guess the dispensary part of it, theoretically, if someone, they, you know, they wrap up the, the product, however they do it, they process it, I'm assuming it's in a cellophane or whatever, you know, they, they have a product that is packaged, and it's going to be in a dispensary, just like if, if it were, say, a bottle of alcohol. It's in a product, it's in a package, and then it's dispensed, right? I guess what I'm getting at is, how come, I guess, how come we're, we are saying that, you know, that, assuming that these are generally comparable goods, alcohol, or, you know, liquor, marijuana, why are we saying that we are only putting the regulations to folks to go get their marijuana in an industrial space? I mean, which, by the way, I don't think even, I think we have to change the definition of I-1 and I-2 in order to make this fit, this, because the current definition, obviously, of industrial, as we said before, is a manufacturing, you know, wholesaling, light industrial. That is not what's happening if it's a dispensary. If we were to say alcohol, for example, if you were to say you're going to go get your, whatever your leader of alcohol, you know, that is not an industrial operation, if you're going to, you know. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I see that for efficiency reason, or for, for whatever reason, we've taken three separate entities, right? A person who grows the stuff, the person who then packages it up and makes it look pretty, and then the one who then sells it in a packaged version. We're saying, let's just stick it all in one, compared to, say, alcohol, for example, where currently, you know, you can go to Tall Tales and they can, you know, they can, not only can they make it, make it in the back, they can turn around and put it and sell it to you in the front, you know, same thing with, as we do with, you know, with Evo or other places. So I'm just guessing, pointing out, it, it doesn't quite seem, I'm, I'm okay with going on board with, okay, we don't want to let farmers do this. If they want to let farmers do it, fine, they got to go into this industrial space to do this. Processing makes total sense, because in the definition of light industrial, it specifically says anything that goes into odor, or smoke, or dust, or toxic fumes, sure, I guess we can make that fit. But the dispensary piece of it, that part doesn't, I don't think, make sense. It seems like we have, it seems like we're getting to a point where we just want to shove it in out of the way, which, hey, you know what, I understand, but we'd have to go and change the definition of light industrial and heavy industrial to be able to make that fit, because currently, if I'm right, this will be the only retail establishment stuffed in industrial.
Director Carter or Mr. McKenzie, would you want to give us some assistance here?
So while they come forward, I guess I can address four parts that the Planning Commission considered in formulating this recommendation at this time. The first is absolutely money. So Visa, MasterCard, the way one can walk into an alcohol dispensary, purchase liquor with a credit card cannot be done. Only cash transactions can be done as a result of overarching federal law. So part of that is, they are not comparable goods. It is still illegal at the federal level, but that flows into the next issue, which is public safety. The day after this meeting, I received an email, and anyone who was on the Cannabis Administration's list, on October 18th, the Cannabis Administration issued an email entitled "Notice: Tips to Reduce Dispensary's Vulnerability to Burglaries." And this goes into the issue that Sheriff Lewis described regarding the ability for police to be able to respond. Because it is a purely cash transaction business, because there are ATMs with inside, because individuals who are going in are known to have cash, and will likely be coming out with cash of some sort, it is a high area, based on the Cannabis Administration themselves saying this is a target for crime. By expanding this to other commercial zones, that is then potentially exposing those commercial, those businesses to the same level of violence, even though they may be a completely cashless system. Another issue that was considered was overzoning. I discussed this last time. When you have a broader policy, and then later say, this is not working, those entities that are acting within what was lawful at the time, if council then trimmed it and went in a more narrow direction, those businesses that were lawfully licensed, that were lawfully operating, are then not legal non-conforming uses. They get to continue to operate as they were, even though it's to everyone's detriment. And then finally, and this follows up with the parking situation, that has been one of the largest issues, though in the city, good neighbors, parking backing up on Mount Herman Road, the other businesses within the industrial complex, or within those, those commercial complexes, not having parking for their customers, having an overflow, and just even having individuals walking between. And you have people receiving true medical care next to somebody receiving financial services, next to someone else receiving a dispensary product. And so those were all the considerations that I believe were presented to the Planning Commission, that this was recommended. And I'll stress this again, and I did last time. This does not prohibit council or Planning Commission, six months down the line, nine months, a year down the line, seeing how well it's operated and growing, but taking this more narrow approach, based on just even the MCA's own email about the susceptibility to burglaries, armed robberies of a person, not a business, of burglaries of a business. Those are all valid concerns regarding public safety, health, and welfare, that I believe the Planning Commission, the directors' report, all encompassed in making this recommendation at this time. Your concerns are extremely valuable, and if it's council's decision, the legislation can be amended, but right now, this is the recommendation, based on what we know the city, the county is receiving.
The fact that the dispensary requires a special exception in the, in the industrial, is that where you get your justification that would alleviate Mr. Hastings' concerns?
Yes.
The special exception creates that.
Creates that. Say that one more time.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. You have the floor.
In regards to the dispensary, when he was asking that particular question, by being able to have it come before as a special exception, that actually creates that opportunity. So that's the reason why, and I have to stress what was said, this is just the beginning. That was one of the things that the commission, you know, was really trying to look at, where do we actually start? And as he stated, as we move through this, whether it's the next six months or whatever, if we have to come back, then that's what we will, but this is a good start, at least, at this particular time. This is new territory, and so we just thought it was better to start here.
James?
So this is going to restrict, like, farmers from growing it in their, in the, in the field that's in agricultural zoned area? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
At least upon how it is now, yes.
Okay. And what's the chances of the, the state attorney general opposing this or coming against this, because it's, I don't know how reasonable it is, because there's only few places that you can actually have this business. And I, I'm not an advocate for cannabis, but at the same time, I'm looking at, is this even fair? I mean, is it? You know, there's only just a handful of places. If you pull up that map, you can look at it and see, most of it is Walmart, most of it is Lowe's, a lot of it is the landfill, and then Walmart, again, I believe, at the bottom half. What is that number six, next to number six at the bottom?
I believe that's predominantly David A. Bramble.
David G.
Yeah, so I mean, like, a lot of these areas are occupied, so, and they're, and they're small areas, and what concerns me is, it's going to be a small niche of people that are going to be able to access this, and I just don't see how that can be fair to somebody that wants to open up a fair business and maybe have armed security guards at their facility to, to take care of some of these issues. And maybe that can be something that we could require, is, is have, make, have them have to have armed guards, or, or just guards in general, at the, at the, at the site, you know, just to alleviate the crime, I mean, at least deter it. I just think, you know, I think we can do maybe a little bit better to make it a little bit more fair.
Would it be, would it be, I guess, reasonable to say that we pass this as is, and when a farmer does come to the county and say, I'd like to grow this, that would probably be the opportune time to consider reevaluating it and getting input from both of you at that time?
I would agree that, you know, again, this is, this is a whole new territory, and we really don't know. And again, we're only talking about, well, I think you said it was two?
Correct.
Two that would actually be issued. So again, this is a very good start, and if that happens, and we're able to actually, you know, be able to collect the necessary data that shows there is a need, and that someone else is, you know, pretty much interested, I think that would be a very good time to come back and have these types of discussions. But as it stands right now, you know, we just believe this is a good start, or the actual commission... we just believe this is a good start, or the actual commission believes this was a good start.
Honestly, I think the state's going to change it three or four more times in the next, forget a year, the next six months.
It won't be long.
Yeah.
It won't be long.
Yes, Josh.
I don't want to take up too much more time, but just the understanding, just from my own understanding, for the folks listening to, typically, if you're going to buy liquor, or alcohol, or another comparable good, which you can use cash to also purchase, that goes in a commercial district, correct? And what is the difference between a C1, C2, C3? Select commercial, general commercial, or regional commercial?
There's no liquor in the county, no.
There are no liquor dispensaries in Wycomico County proper. There are liquor dispensaries located within Wycomico County, but they are in the city of Salisbury, so there are no county regulations for liquor at this time.
Great point. You can still buy a growler at Tall Tales, or, well, I don't think Tall Tales sells anything anymore, so I'll pull back on that. But regardless, you can go in the places in the county. You can get alcohol, correct? I'm using as a comparable good. What, as far as commercial districts, generally alcohol sales, or those places where you can purchase alcohol, which is, can be, as we all know, far more deadly. That would typically go in which of those, C1, C2, C3? And what's the difference between those commercial districts?
Which I am bringing my zoning code, so.
Okay.
I apologize.
We have the moratorium, like, we just passed that, so.
Correct.
Can we, like, make a motion to do this in a work session? To maybe go over this again in a work session? I mean, we have six months. We don't need to pass this right now.
We do before the December 13-ish. They're gonna, the state's gonna make some announcements. That's why we're trying to move it ahead now.
Okay.
But it does feel a little, I don't want to say half-baked, pardon the pun. It doesn't, it does feel like we haven't fully thought this through in a way that's the most helpful. And I want to stress, of course, I really, really appreciate the hard work of everyone who's tried to be thoughtful about this. This is something new for our county. I also understand, of course, you know, was it 67% of our voters said that this is something that they wanted? So, I think my concern, and far be it for me to be an advocate for marijuana, but I want to make sure that they can have the ability to access something that they want. Until, you know, a couple, until very recently, you know, marijuana was still one of those things that's seen as a medical use. And we can't have folks who, you know, I know children have epilepsy, or, you know, there's a million different uses that folks have been using it for. You know, if they have to drive to a place that they can't walk to, if it is functionally inaccessible, that's a problem. So, I want to make sure that we get it right going forward. So, if we want to move this forward now, okay. But I think we should, in the year ahead, really take a better look at this and make sure that we're doing it right. And out of the 2,093 acres, that's great that that's industrial area, but there could be only three of those acres that's actually available to be used. And if we functionally only have three acres out of 2,093 acres, you know, that's not really available. So, that's why I'd rather us be a little bit more broad, but understood. And I'll pause there. Thank you.
Okay. And we could move it forward and then always come back with a work session to try to fine-tune it? Because as I said before, there are going to be a lot of things that are going to be... This bill will probably be amended, I'm assuming, at least within the next year. And at that point in time, we could also have a work session to address those concerns as well.
I would like to try having a work session in the next two weeks instead of, you know, to make sure we get it right before we just pass it. I mean, I don't see why, I mean, we have December, December... We have another, we have another session this month. So I don't know if we can maybe work it into a work session and then go into a legislative session with a public hearing on it. Just trying to...
Well, we've had work sessions on this.
Yeah, we have.
We have had work sessions.
One, I think, one work session on it.
Well, there's a motion to, I'm assuming there's a motion to postpone. Is that what you're saying?
Would it be postponed or tabled?
It would be a motion to postpone. Motion to table is if you're going to bring it back later in the same meeting.
Yeah, motion to postpone.
A motion to postpone. It requires a second. Is there a second?
There's a final second, huh?
Motion and second, no discussion. All those in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion to postpone, correct?
There's a motion to postpone it. So all those in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair's opposed. But it will be postponed. Mrs. Hurley, does this now require us to go through public comments and public hearing? I mean, excuse me, advertising and everything else, all over again?
Yeah, we had the public hearing this evening. I mean, you can certainly have another public hearing if you would like to, but it's not a requirement. You have 60 days to act on the bill once it's introduced.
60 days to act, okay. But it does not have to go into effect prior to that 60 days, right? Others, because...
You just have to...
We have to vote on it.
Right.
Now, are we postponing it to have a work session on it? Is that what we're doing?
We're postponing it to have a work session, but we're not going to have that work session tonight. It'll be the next meeting, the meeting after that.
It's still emergency legislation, so we'd have to vote on it at the next meeting.
No, this is not going to be introduced as emergency. So the...
I was going to say, if we need to, can we make it emergency legislation?
No. I don't think there's any justification for that.
Okay, we don't need to.
Yeah, I think that was the purpose of making the moratorium emergency legislation.
So we're still going to be within the correct timeframe? So that this goes into action well before the moratorium is over? I would say so. We've got six months on a moratorium.
And add 60 days to what, as a non-emergency, add 60 days from the date that presumably it's approved by the executive. So if...
This is about four months.
Exactly.
Three, four months.
So, last time, the request was to look at growing the buffers, and staff went about and produced buffers that were much larger. What is, since that does not seem to be the direction that is saw at this time, what is, what should staff be bringing to present?
I would just like to see, I mean, first of all, I want to make sure, I understand you want to move it quickly, so next meeting, we'll make a vote. I think I'd just like to have a better understanding, commercial districts, personally.
C1 and C2.
Yeah, for the commercial district. Is there a way that we can merrily add in a commercial district where that could still be possible? I just don't want it to be inaccessible, personally, for folks who want to utilize it. And, you know, and then the only other question there, and that's just on the dispensary side of things. The only other question there, or at least what I'm hearing, just was with regard to grow, if we wanted to put parameters around that. And maybe that's more a long-term decision because we only have one ag district, as compared to many other counties have multiple ag districts. So that would just be open, kind of blanket open, and maybe that's a little too uncomfortable for folks soon. But at least, coming from my side, President Ken, it's just that, I just would like to be able to see from the commercial districts if we can get a little more clarity there for the dispensary part of it. And then, I think maybe long-term, in my view, maybe the ag district. I would love for a farmer, if a farmer wanted to do this, I would love for a county to be able to grow it here. I want to keep money in Wycomico County. I don't want someone else growing it and then getting the money out, you know, here. But I also want to do it in a safe way where everyone feels comfortable. So maybe that's more long-term. Thank you, Mr. Ken.
Does that help you? I believe so.
Does the...
Joe?
When we're talking about the dispensing, the city will have their own set of guidelines to where they want it dispensed correctly. Correct, excuse, correct. So, when we're talking about the industrial zoning in the county, the city will still have their areas that they can dispense. So, now, we're not talking about growing now, we're just talking about dispensing. So, there'll be a lot more places available in Wycomico County in the city for them to dispense marijuana if they want to. So you're not going to be limited just to the industrial zones in the county for dispensing. And that's not going to be the only place. I'm not sitting here advocating this either, because you have feelings on it. But anyway, just to clear that up.
Good point.
And I guess the other municipalities will have that same opportunity if they want to.
It's the same.
So, it won't just be these little blotches that's been up on the screen tonight that'll be allowed for dispensing. I mean, they can have a, according to what the state does, they can have 50 dispensaries along Route 13 somewhere, you know, in the future, so.
Good point. That's a good point. Can I just clarify? Is there a consensus, looking up on the board, that this state enumerated buffers of 500 feet between all of one and two, and 1,000 feet between businesses, that the buffers themselves are acceptable?
Can we extend it for schools?
That's a good question that was brought up.
It was.
Last time. So what the state legislation is, is right here, B and C. So, C provides a political subdivision, may adopt an ordinance reducing the distance requirements under subsection B of this section. But, that, so what it's been interpreted as, a bunch of attorneys, everyone has obviously different interpretations, is some take the position that the state has only empowered the political subdivisions to reduce the distance requirements. Others have taken the interpretation, such as Worcester County, that 500 feet is the minimum, and that as long as it's reasonable and not unduly burdensome, that going up to 2,000 feet would be acceptable. So, but playing with these numbers matters because as when we look back at the other slides, this is based on the current buffers that are provided. So for example, staff prepared one, a slide, just to give an example. If you went, if the recommendation at council was 2,000 feet buffers everywhere, this is what the buffer would look like, thereby reducing the total available acreage to 1,237 acres, or 855 less acreage available than under the 500-foot buffer. And if we're talking about within commercial areas, lots of the schools are within those commercial areas. And that could then make all the commercial discussion for not if you increase the buffer. So unfortunately, it all sort of goes hand in hand. And that's why I think the Planning Commission did a phenomenal job in making the recommendation that they did, running through the various maps, because it's a pool in one direction, it's a given in another direction. And so, expanding the buffer footage, but also increasing the number of zones that it can be a use, could just be a complete washout because it went too far. So, this is an idea of what staff prepared to give some ideas. So this is if it's a 2,000-foot buffer everywhere. This is if it's 500 feet, but 2,000 feet just for schools. It's 122 less acres available than under the 500 universal. This is if you go 1,000-foot buffer everywhere. It's 270 less acres. And then this is 500-foot buffer, but 1,000 feet for school. You see, this is sort of something that's a little bit more doable as it only reduces it by 15 less acres. And that's predominantly in an area located closer to the city. So, staff will do its best to prepare guidelines based on the state-recommended zoning buffers, unless there's feedback to increase those buffers.
And if you look at ag, I think we're going to also have possibly look at the right to farm law. So that might also stem some things as well. So we might want to...
That's a great point.
We might want to consider that, you know, that might become also an issue, so.
Thank you.
Just putting that out there.
I would be fine with the adding the buffer for the schools.
Increasing, you mean?
Yes.
Increasing the distance.
Increasing?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
I agree.
And you're saying state law is 500?
Yeah.
Yes.
We could get pushback, but...
Again, here, you're only seeing a reduction from when... This is with places of assembly, it's 2,093 acres, and that's with 500-foot universal buffer. When all you do is add 1,000 feet for school, you only lose 15 less acres available. When you increase that to 2,000 feet to school, you lose 122 less acres. So this gives you, and this is all within the briefing book that was... So it can be studied, but these are sort of like the hard numbers on schools. Again, the biggest argument is, is it unduly burdensome? And then adding the additional requirement, is it reasonable? And public safety, public health, those are valid concerns, obviously, with schoolchildren.
Yeah.
When the Planning Commission was discussing this, the animal in the room was that one statement you made about, is it unduly burdened the business? And that's where the state has this one statement that they can basically step in and say, anything council does, Planning Commission does, violates that. So that's the big, the big problem there, so.
So there was one more, if I may, I know it's sort of, but since it's going to be a work session, in, there was a discussion about measuring buffers, because this all, again, plays into considerations on zones and buffers and how the staff is going to measure. So unlike within the alcohol and beverage and cannabis title, it's all one title now, alcohol is, there's explicit measurements for alcohol. That is what you see here as option one. It is measured from the front door of the entrance of the cannabis business to the front door or main entrance of the place enumerated in subsection A. Now, public parks and playgrounds are part of that, but there are no front doors or public entrances for that. So the recommendation is, if discussing measuring buffers, to do a parcel boundary on playgrounds and public parks, which if going with the idea of protecting the youth, that's obviously a better way to measure. When you look at option three, that was provided for discussion, this is between parcel-to-parcel boundary. That provides a very narrow ability to expand the number of businesses. So, these are amendments that could be added to the bill. I believe option one is what council was looking for in the consideration of how is it most like alcohol? And it can be discussed on how a friendly amendment to the current bill would be. So these are all, this is now the whole presentation to ruminate on for the next work session. Staff will try to apply C1 and C2 buffers at the state level, but then also at the 1,000-foot for school and 2,000 feet for school, and try to get, turn that around.
James?
Yeah, I just had one quick question, then we can move on. It, uh, got going, I just lost it. On-site consumption. Is that something that's legal, or is that going to be legal to do?
State law completely lives in the power of the county to decide whether or not to allow onsite consumption.
I think that it would be a good idea to not allow onsite consumption, to prevent the loitering, you know, and just, I just think it's a good idea.
That's what the recommendation from the Planning Commission is.
Okay.
Is there anything else you wanted them to review and reference? You were talking about the farmer, if a farmer wants to just...
Yeah, I was, I don't know what the state, does the state give us any rules on what farmers can and can't do? You're going to review that, though, with the Right to Farm Act. So, okay.
Respectfully, given everyone's time commitment and every, I think, looking at agriculture six or nine months down the line, right to farm's a complicated issue. Looking at the impacts on that, that would probably be something better to refer to the Planning Commission for their discussion at the future and to look at that. So respectfully, looking at the C1, C2 should be the decision for the next council meeting.
I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We'll do that in the next, in the next meeting in November.
Thank you all very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
This evening is resolution number 133-2023. This is to approve the removal of a forest conservation easement containing 4.99 acres, as well as the onsite relocation of a forest conservation easement containing 33.63 acres on parcels 223 and 398, tax map 30, owned by Salisbury Ventures LLC. The public hearing notice was posted on the county's website. This resolution was on the October 17th meeting agenda, but it did not move forward due to a lack of a second on the motion to introduce the resolution. We did receive a request to put it back on the agenda this evening. And, you know, it is on for a public hearing, followed by discussion and vote. is on for a public hearing followed by discussion and vote. And I believe we have Marilyn Williams here. If there are any questions. Frank McKenzie is here.
I would like to, a couple of things I would like to know, wanted to make sure that, I don't know if we formally stated that, that Leslie Bill 2023-16 was postponed and will postpone that until November 21st. Just wasn't sure if we had that on the record. The only other thing I would add is that we do have representatives from the Phoenix Youth Project. We have read your proclamation, but we have it here for you and if you have any comments that you would like to make at the podium, feel free to do so at this point in time. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, well, hi, my name's Gillian Yurant. I am an homeless youth services intern at Phoenix Youth Project. That internship is through Salisbury University. I am a senior social work major and this is where I'll be doing my intern for the duration of my senior year. And this is, was my first time asking for a proclamation and learning this process and talking and promoting National Runaway Prevention Month. So, I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for this experience. Oh, yeah.
Amber, Amber.
Thank you, Amber. She's a great mentor, everyone.
This time we open the floor for public hearing on resolution number 133-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your county residents and your concerns. This is in reference to resolution 133, the removal of a forest conservation easement.
Hi, my name is Susan Brown. I, my family owns 189 acres that is north of the Parsons Lake project. Our farm has been in our family while over 150 years. Brown Road is Brown Road because of my great-great-grandfather who had owned all of the land in the area and had 10 children and meted it out. And we are the last surviving Browns that own land on Brown Road. I'm not, I, I, I want some clarification about many things and I, the, my opposition to the 4.99 acres is that the land that they want to relocate is not one solid piece of land from what I understand. The 33 acres can be bits and pieces throughout the Parsons development. The land that is right on Brown Road, and if you're not familiar with Brown Road, it is a connecting road between Daggsborough Road and Zion Road. Every tractor trailer that carries beans north usually come into Rumridge Road off a line road, cross Daggsborough Road and go to Brown Road, to Zion Road, to Purdue Mill. There, I heard there was a traffic study. I would ask the council before you ever vote on this, that you would be able to tell me how many tractor trailers go up and down that road in a year. There, in my opinion, are hundreds per week in this time of year when they're hauling beans. It's intensified. I have some other friends that live on Brown Road, but there are 20, approximately 20, 21 houses on Brown Road. Most of those people have lived there beyond 20 years, 25. Myself, I have lived on our farm since 1989. I grew up in a development. My, my one point is if they're removing five acres of wetlands, wooded areas, all of it's wetlands, folks, I can tell you, I live on the high part of Brown Road. I, a lot of my farm is sand. It goes off into the wooded area and into the wooded area, lots of old forestation, old forestation. I've gone hip-deep walking through the woods where a tree had, you know, just gone into the ground and you're walking in the woods and you go right into that hole. So, it's an old forest. But the land along Brown Road and in the area that they're talking about, the ditches are about four feet deep, usually filled with trash. The county has a struggle with that, but they, they try very hard. But that land, as water is running off, goes to a branch that connects to Johnson Pond, which connects to the river, which connects to the bay. So, we have a couple of things going on. We have people that lived on the north end of Brown Road who get flooded. They need all the water to be able to run and absorb into this wooded area that they want to eliminate. If the replacement land is not in that area, if it's in some other part of the 300 acres that is part of Parsons Lake development, it's not gonna get the same absorption. You, you have, there is no way that a half a mile land, a half a mile away is gonna do, serve the same purpose that the land that's sitting beside that road. I have some unintended consequences I need for you to understand too as a council. Our farm is a butt, what butts up to our farm with the city is Mill Pond Village and Addison Court. When they put Mill Pond Village in, we didn't oppose anything. We've never opposed Addison Court. They put a buffer hill, a berm behind Mill Pond Village to our property. We have rented our farmland since before I was born. My grandfather rented it to the Wilbur's. The Wilbur's still rent our farmland. It has gone from crops to sod for over 20 years. It was a huge productive sod business in this area. That berm caused the unintentional con, results were water to run off into our cleared field and the Wilbur's have lost acreage over the years of being able to produce. One thing you all, I mean, you must consider unintentional consequences. The other piece that I have to say, the county roads has a difficult time keeping up with their responsibilities. They put a new pipe under Brown Road in front of my farm, a year and a half, almost two years ago. That's great, we want the water. Cameron wants the water to flow off his property down into the branch. Unfortunately, they have not maintained the pipe that they put underneath the road. It was the width of the road, three to four feet wide. That had a four-to-five inch dip and I can tell you in the middle of the night how many tractor trailers rolled up and down that road because the dump, when they hit that hole, made a sound for every tire. Currently, the county has come back one time to fill in what had settled. There still is not a smooth transition. Part of it's high, part of it's low. My farm has had chicken production for, since 1970, 78, 76. We ended our chicken production in 2020. We had six chicken houses. That meant every 10 weeks or so, we had a chicken movement of over 120,000 chickens. We had tractor trailers coming in and out of Brown Road driveway for that many years with that tonnage of chickens and our driveway never had a problem. Within the last year and a half, from all the vibration and the ill-mannered way that that road has been maintained, my driveway has a three-foot section that is imploding on one side and the other side, there is a buildup of silt. So, essentially, what they tried to do with the piping to move the water, they have not come back to even see what the consequence was from them not maintaining or fixing the road properly. My point is, if you're gonna take away five acres to make an access from a 300 or 400 development property onto Brown Road, you've gotta think about the consequences down the road. If you cannot maintain a 30-by-four-foot section of the road without it doing detriment, I, I don't know how you're gonna maintain a county road that's gonna have that many people moving into it. Also, why would you take a city property that has an access to Naylor Mill Road that's all city property, curbed, they have drainage? Brown Road has nothing but a four-foot ditch for drainage. Why would you, as a county, want that's, that responsibility dumped on you? Why wouldn't you want them all to go right out the Naylor Mill Road the way that it was intended when the property was put up for development? Bennett Road was the only access to the Parsons farm before the development and they put the access out to Naylor Mill. Bennett Road is about a quarter-mile road. Brown Road is over a mile and a half. The amount of work that you would have to do to Bennett Road to continue that access, I would think would be much less than the amount of money that you're gonna have to spend, spend and maintain on Brown Road. So, as county people, I don't know why you wanna take on the burden of a city project with unintended consequences that could happen. So, just realize that and I appreciate you considering not allowing this to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other public comments?
My name is Cameron Galloway and I live an eighth of a mile from Mrs. Brown. And what I like to bring to everyone's attention is the same thing of the unintended consequences. The reason that pipe was even put across the road a year and a half ago was because my house flooded three times within two years. And when I mean flooded, I mean not a single, I have two and a half acres, not a single bit of grass you could see, water inside the house, thousands of dollars in damage. The county finally came out and put that pipe under the road because I had a bobcat out there and I said, I'm gonna dig up this road myself because you're not gonna destroy my house anymore. They finally came out and did something about it. Ever since then, I haven't flooded and magically went away. We have seen the water change on Brown Road over, over the past couple of years because I bought my house in 2011. My neighbors, they built their house back in the 80s. It had never flooded a single time, but now both of our properties have been underwater three times and we're talking about getting rid of water, you know, water mitigation system down the end of our road. So, water's really gonna be flowing onto my property all the time. I never thought, living in the middle of a farm, that I would have to have flood insurance, but I had flood insurance for five years at $4,000 a year. So, that, there's $20,000 just in insurance to try and protect my property that I never expected to have to do. So, I'm just asking for you guys to, you know, like Ms. Brown said, just take all of these things into consideration. I mean, the amount of accidents that we have on Brown Road, it's incredible being, people are always in those ditches and then now we have a bunch more people trying to access the road right past a curve at the same time. It just doesn't make a whole bunch of sense. So, that's all I like to add to the conversation.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments for resolution 133-2023. Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 133-2023.
Let's move.
We have a motion to second. We have a motion to second, discussion.
Yes, I have a question and it's just one that I always ask. We, we have two people here that live on Brown Road. Was the community, the residents ever notified about?
No, no, we were not notified. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, could you come forward for us so that we can?
It's actually Mr. McKenzie is gonna be speaking on.
Nina Frank.
Good evening. I'm filling in for Marilyn Williams, who's our forest conservation staff person. We recently hired a new person, started with this about a month ago. My understanding is that when this project went through the process, it was a city mandated pro, a city design project, a review project. The forest conservation is something that the county implements on behalf of all jurisdictions in White Compa County. So, we do work for the city of Salisbury. And that's what we're talking about tonight is what's going on with the city of Salisbury Forest Conservation. At the time, I think for the public notice, I think the city went through a series of public notices for the development itself, aside from what the forest conservation was. Now, I wasn't part of any of those discussions, but there are some representatives from, I think Becker Morgan here, who may be able to answer some of those questions. But, you know, there was, you know, a lot of review and public response for the city of Salisbury review of this. Now, some of the unintended consequences of this are because some of the land adjacent to this property are in the county. So, exactly, you know, how this all can be worked together in the future is perhaps more communication between the county public works, city public works. A lot of this, though, is handled at the planning commission level. You know, I think the, the traffic study was done on a much broader area than just in the city of Salisbury. I think they took into consideration lots of land in the county outside of that. But as far as storm warning management, I'm, I'm not the person to respond to those type of questions.
But my concern is that when you make a, a change, because see, I'm new to this. When, when you make a change like that, I just look at removing woods and putting woods back, that's how I look at it, acres, you know, because I'm a layperson when it comes to this. But when I hear this testimony, this is the first time I heard this, I think that every resident's on a particular road, when a change is gonna be made, explanation is supposed, and they're supposed to find out the trickle-down effect that it's gonna have on people and taxpayers, because they're property owners, what it's gonna do to them when they make a change. I'm speaking to, I'm not speaking to you, Frank, I know you're, I'm speaking to Becker Morgan. You've gotta let those people know and even meet those people and explain what's gonna happen. Then they, they would come, they come up here and when they tell me, no, they weren't contacted, that kind of bothers me, for me not to support this because I think the, the people that live there should've been contacted. And I've always believed that.
Well, I, I believe that there's a public notice for the public hearing, which we're discussing tonight, that explains, you know, the process that they were trying to resolve.
But they need to get a letter. They need to get a letter. They need to get commu, better communication. I mean, people, you know, we talk about public notices and PAC 14 and all this. The average person don't do that. They don't look at ads in the paper and things like that. We, a, a letter should've went out to every resident, just like when you campaign and get in office, you send, send material out. Well, you should send something out to the people when you're making a change to their neighborhood. That's all I'm saying.
You make a good point, but the only thing is, is that that is not the law, current law under which we are operating.
Yeah.
Either the citizens or the, or the people who are developing this property or planning the zoning, so we have to work on the expectations of what the current law is. It certainly would possibly benefit us to put a requirement in for, for having it mailed first class.
Yeah. Well, I'm just.
Registered in the future.
Yeah, but it's just a sad, communication is very important to me. Communication, transparency, everything's, that kind of stuff is, and avoid conflict.
What's, what's the plan for the road? Brown Road, what's the?
I think we need to understand a couple of things here, really. First of all, we have nothing to do, we have nothing to do with the traffic issues. We have nothing to do with the roads.
Right.
Ours is simply, this is a situation that's before us in reference to the approval of the conservation easement itself. Which is the land.
However, John, this is a source of contention and I know the folks from Becker Morgan, it's been up before and, you know, I know they've said they'd be willing to work, you know, try to solve the problem. Correct? I mean, you know, so you see what issues we have right now on the table. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Bennett Road, was it ever considered to use Bennett Road for an exit entrance to that development? If there was, or why wasn't there?
I'm unfamiliar which road Bennett Road is. Can you explain to me?
It's a road that goes into the Parsons property and I guess it attaches to this property off of Zion Road.
So, the parcels, there were two parcels that were made up of the Parsons Lake single-family subdivision. The only roads, public roads that abut our parcels that we had access to without having to go through someone else's property, which we didn't own or have rights to, were the existing Parsons Lake Drive, which is the main extension and it's the main entrance in and out, and Brown Road on the east side were the only two public roads that abutted the property. So, we didn't have an opportunity to connect to Bennett because we don't have continuity to that road. to that road.
The other question I have.
Who owns the property? Can we ask, who owns it? Because that property, that was the only access to that property forever, was Bennett Road to the Parsons Farm. I mean, we know them. I knew who they were.
The gate's still there.
Yeah. And, and they've had dump trucks take soil on and off through that.
What's really confusing me, what's confusing me is why we're having so much of discussion at this point in time, at the last hour at this council meeting, as opposed to why this isn't something that wasn't addressed at planning and zoning. Notices went out. There was plenty, there was plenty of opportunity for this discussion, so I'm really confused as to why.
I have a question about the reforestation. Excuse me. The reforestation, if, if you did not, if you wanted to develop the whole property, could you purchase reforestation off, off-site?
There is a small portion that's being purchased off-site. We chose to maximize the amount of forestation that we could do onsite. As you all are aware, the, the state priorities are to do forested wetlands as a number-one priority, so all forested wetlands onsite are being preserved. There's a very large portion of that on the north side of the site. There's also a very large portion on the south side of the site next to the branch that is all being preserved, and several sections of that are several hundred feet wide, so they're very large stands of forest. We also chose to do an enhanced width buffer on the Brown Road side. State minimum is 35 feet. We know that the county prefers to see a larger buffer than that, so we willingly did that 50-foot buffer that the county prefers to see along Brown Road. Also, on the west side adjacent to the townhomes that were developed quite a few years ago, there's also a 50-foot buffer for most of that as well, too. And then also against the apartments that are currently under development right now, there's also a 50-foot buffer along that as well. So we maximized the amount of bufferage that could be done onsite, and only a small portion of it was purchased offsite.
But I, I guess I didn't state my question correctly. If you wanted to develop more of this property and put more houses on it, you could have bought more also.
Could have, yes.
So you minimize the amount of houses on there by using what's on-site anyway.
Yeah, the zoning would have allowed for, oh, gosh, the number was around 380 homes, I think it was. If you remember back in 2003, when this was annexed into the city of Salisbury, it was annexed under an ordinance, and the zoning was established at that time for 380 homes. We currently have about 317, so the developer sought to purposefully decrease the minimum, or maximum allowable density and do less in order so that we could preserve more forest conservation onsite.
It's a city problem.
And what number are you at now?
About 317 homes is where we're at right now.
What?
A city.
What a, so, okay, let's just say we remove the, the 4.99 acres. What, what, what are we going to do about the drainage? And, and what are we going to do to guarantee that Ms. Susan doesn't have a flood in her farm?
So that's a great question. As you're all aware, that Maryland has the minimum stormwater requirements that we have to meet. City of Salisbury also looks at an additional requirement, which is reducing the runoff further. As you know, there's some flooding that happens down the branch a little ways, what's the next street over from 13, through Northwood Industrial Park, Northwood Drive. They've had some issues with flooding down there. The city told us at the beginning of the project that they expected us to go above the minimum standards. So we actually have, when we compare the pre-development runoff rate to the post-development, a 90% reduction in what is currently running off of the site in the wooded condition. We have many very large ponds onsite. Several of them are very large infiltration ponds. We have some very good pockets of sand on the site where we have very good infiltration rates. So we have greatly oversized all the stormwater management onsite to almost have no runoff from that project. And so that's all documented in the stormwater management report that the city of Salisbury approved. We also went above and beyond, too, and not just do one large facility for the whole project, but the environmental site design, they want us to see those practices spread throughout the site. So we have about seven or eight different stormwater facilities, and in addition to that, we have done grass rails on all the rear lot lines. A lot of the houses don't abut their neighbor to the rear. There's open space in between the rear of the homes, so that we've got grass rails that help further reduce the runoff, allows infiltration. So we've tried to implement a lot of these environmental site design practices to just, do just that, is to keep the runoff as low as possible.
I don't want to get off topic. I understand that we're here for the easement relocation. But I am curious, why did you decide to come out on Brown Road and not Naylor Mill Road?
We are coming out on Naylor Mill Road. That is our main entrance. Yes, there are two minor entrances on the rear for safety. I know that emergency services doesn't ever want to see a single way in or out of a neighborhood that they want to see alternate ways in. Our original design had three entrances. We reduced that to two on Brown Road because we felt that three weren't necessary, so we just have the two. And when we did the traffic study, we sort of look at the, the demand. Where do people want to go to, and where do they, are they coming from? And the majority of people from this neighborhood are going to go to work, you know, they might go north to Dover or into Sussex County. They may go into the city of Salisbury. Most of your shopping access is going to be through Naylor Mill Road, and Parsons Lake Drive is the main entrance. So the majority of traffic in the traffic study is documented to be in those areas and go out that main entrance. So we expect to see Naylor Mill Road be the heavily traveled entrance, and Brown Road is, is just an alternate way to get in. If somebody's going out to the county to the east, and they're not going downtown or going to Route 13 to all the services there, they may find a way out the back way to go visit friends or something that live nearby, but that is not as direct a route as going out Naylor Mill Road. Naylor Mill Road just is the entrance that makes sense to get in and out of the project. There were some entrance improvements required as part of our traffic study. We did the scoping meeting with the state highway, with Wycomico County, and with the city of Salisbury. We, we didn't decide what we got to study. They told us what we were going to study. And so there were many intersections that we did. We did Zion Road and Route 13. We did Naylor Mill Road and Route 13. We did all of our site entrances. We did Daggsborough Road and Route 13. And after we got done doing the study, S H A reviewed it and approved it. City and county both reviewed it and approved it. The only recommendation for an improvement was at the entrance where the site comes out at Naylor Mill Road and Parsons Lake Drive. We had to add an additional turn lane on Parsons Lake Drive. Currently, it's just a single lane exiting. We had to add a dedicated right lane and a dedicated left lane in order for there to be adequate capacity to exit the neighborhood. But the existing roads have the capacity necessary to handle the development, and they felt that there was no detriment from this development to the existing road network. And so it's, it's been reviewed and approved by all three agencies.
Getting back to the mitigation, the conservation easement, Joe, I'm assuming the planning zoning vetted all of this, and they, they reviewed it on. Yeah. So there's one, one thing I'd like to say, you know, and I've had several conversations with Mrs. Brown over the years about the condition of the road, the lack of maintenance of the road.
I'm not worried about the roads.
Well, wait a minute, I, I am.
But that's not our, our responsibility.
I know, I know, John, but I want to say this before we go to a vote. If this passes, I think this council needs to stress very strongly how, because they wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for the forest conservation, okay? We wouldn't have the folks here tonight, okay?
Right, not the roads, but the conservation.
But that's one of their concerns, that we need to step up maintenance, and this is not just on Brown Road, but roads all over the county. The council, the county has been short-sighted on the maintenance of a lot of roads, and Brown Road is one of them, and I think we need to stay on the county executive's office or whatever to make sure that these issues are taken care of. So.
And I understand the concerns of, of the individuals that spoke tonight. I do understand that, but, you know, what we're looking at here as far as a county council's concerned is to review and to make sure, I guess, that the proper processes were followed, all the legal processes were followed, that whatever service was required, whatever notices were required, whatever was asked of the developer on the part of the Planning and Zoning Commission was addressed. And if those are all the, all the boxes that have been checked, then I think that's what our authority is, to decide whether or not that, that process has been legitimate. And I'm assuming that, since it's gotten out of planning and zoning, and from what you're talking to us, especially about, you know, what, what concerns there were that were addressed, just with the traffic alone, that the mitigation and the, and the conservation easements were also taken into consideration.
Yes.
Yeah, because that's their role. You know, we're not as, we're not as, as knowledgeable in planning and zoning as, as, that's why we have a planning and zoning commission to try to address those issues. I just think we have to make sure that the processes that were initiated and were put in place have been followed correctly.
I could add just one.
Yes.
One comment. Something that we haven't talked about that's part of this forest relocation is going all the way back to 2003 is where, I'm sorry, going all the way back to 2003.
If you could listen here, I'm sorry, for the public.
Name is Kevin Parsons with Becker Morgan, and I handle forest conservation for the group. Part of what we're doing here also is trying to clean up a bit of a, of a problem in the, in the public record with these easements. There was a, the easements that we're talking about tonight are easements that were created back in 2003, that, that was a time when forest conservation plans weren't necessarily recorded. So we have a 2020 plan that was recorded without knowledge of the 2003 plan. So another thing we're trying to take care of here is to, to clean up the record on, on forest conservation for this whole area. The result is overlapping easements in the 2003 plan and the 2020 plan. So that's just another aspect of the, of, of why we're looking at forest conservation, and we're all trying to kind of, to clean up what's been, been done. And nowadays, these plans are recorded in the, in the land records. So again, we've got a couple plans separated by, by quite a bit of time that overlap each other, and this, this effort will clean that up and make for a, a total addressing of the large parcel.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I know it's unrelated, but to the removal of the acreage, but I, I was just interested in if we, we could see the traffic study. I mean, I haven't even, I haven't seen it, and, and, I mean, I've been down Brown Road many, many times, and I've talked to many people that live on that road, and it's, it's very busy. So the intersections are kind of tricky, especially when there's corn in the field on, on Brown and Zion Road, and my concern is you're going to get a lot of backup coming out of the neighborhood. Just, you know, I, I'm just, you know, I'm just, just trying to think before it happens.
It certainly is, is part of the record with regard to the, the planning commission review, and, and should be available to anybody that needs to see it.
Okay.
Any other questions, Congress? All those in favor of Resolution 133-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, motions carried, six to one. Resolution 133-2023 passes.
Very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.